I'll set. It's following the anxiety commission meeting. First item is. I can hear. Yeah. And this. Yeah. Now. Point Kevin to set. The. First item on the agenda. Duration of public hearings. On the text. There's a lot of pages and very social.
Well, yeah, so as you asked me last night, I tried to.
That's a good job. It's upper.
Generally, the topics that you heard about. Everything that we received for the hearing during the hearing, just so you had it all.
Now, I thought. Actually, I went through it myself. I items that I thought were catch. They want to kiss. I like it or don't like it. Which agrees with what Deb gave us, I think, as a lookless way. Approach, but unlike it was called. Correction. And then make a determination that these action items. Keep either rewrite. Opposed regulation, which would then be. Problems. So. I'll just go down on a page. Starting with what Deb has. His comments, um, she has their bullets. Or paint the board. It's actually the first major, major issue that's raised. Short term rentals should be allowed. One is within the walk of. And SDR should be allowed in this. Well, we're on the table and see what people's thoughts, whether we should address this standard. Could be ours. And. All of this. In the RS. Intify. Or. Images. Much as I. Understand even excluding future. If you're not fully curious. If you aren't in the zones. Reason we did what we did was. This we spent time. When you think about this, it come up literally as own, but that moves. Like to have any of us, I would just generate. I'll just said by my head that I also. Complicates higher. Buildings. I was trying. Since. Also, I had that. I. So. See. Closer, closer. April. It's some change. Change. Our so. Late like how say. Reach. You are not.
Yeah. Thanks. Every time you start with something that's vague and. Unbelievable as this is, sometimes you start with what you think is the best solution. Issues that always are. And I think a couple of things really clear from the public comment that they really didn't want their residential. Here, but it's very like they've become. First of some of the commercial. Aspects of it. And. So I think that was really important. Go back again, the word go back. Of course, you probably comment here say it might be. For. That's a low goal. A lot of people. So I think we have to agree with compromise. When you talk about walkable, it's like there's. Walkable is an interesting thing. I mean, vehicle law is. So I'm not sure that's it. I think we tried to do best compromise. I think we certainly against the area. Got the commercial. Compromised.
Kevin, do you have any?
Um, just a few thoughts. So I also agree. I felt that we were very precise and compromised. And felt that the R zone did not say what the net compromise therefore I would not give. I have the R.
So. I look at the. Only map. Yeah, it's. Very good. I guess it is a. But also. The way we limit. Limits on. Has to be owner. Well, I. Residential primary residence. Hence, one that one of the proposals. Was in the era was that the STRs would not be closer than the. Tends to not. And it would be for everything. Well. For people with I. Location, your purpose. You to end of the show. That's. That's. But I gather that. Majority is. Except. The RS ownership. Not me. Remember. If. Even though they have to be on. No, only. Okay. Owner has to have. Be the primary resident. I think. Oh. So. We have. Some short term rentals. In the. I will. One. RS.
Almost two years. Maybe the thing about this. I can do this and it feels.
Yeah, we had changed. Well, we have changed. Wow. The short term rental.
We did change a lot of things.
Oh, where are we doing? Versus primary residence, so that people could. Have one without the. But it limits, limits. If that's the I. Sweating. But I would also. In that if the day. Or. You down? Yeah. Maybe. Have a. Want to do. All. Well, I was hoping that. We have these types of regulations.
Well, that's that might, you know, this might be something that we have to.
That would reflect.
We don't have that.
No, no, I.
Might be, I would say I might be swayed if that were.
I won't say good, yeah. Cookies. Work. Fortune. You get rid of. Well, it allows for some people. Who have the right to. Part of the. House. Or building. Is it sure? They're in a residence. For. Else. Right. Actually. How's it? We get money, earning down with you is. It's all. I mean, this is something that we could possibly. Is it? Hi.
Excuse me, before we go on to the next item, I see there are a number of attendees when they're raised. The public hearing has been closed, and so the commission cannot take any additional comment. Next.
On step. They're only very. Okay, well, it sounds like. Going for it. We.
Excuse me, sorry. It can be audio. You're having a hard time hearing. Sorry. Online people having a hard time hearing.
Microphones.
Okay, the next one, I got them. Next area is. Specific comments, required minimums. Two days. And I read this one. Like, well, I think. Thought it was. The definition of elsewhere. Ages. When it's hotel. For to. Our. Have to be two days. I don't think.
I think it's, it's looking to. It's kind of a problem that there isn't.
Right. That's. As we define what is this. I don't think that. Stand that for a while. Help him fix anything. Okay, the next one requires short term rentals to be separated from. And I want to mention. Hey. Really. Is. Even. Not here. Like to say. Name is one. This. Just say all. Which was up.
I think the comment was to us to determine separated from the decent property that may not be assured. I certainly. Separating the short term.
Oh.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
What's that?
But it was even separate.
But if you have your computers. Read. Fifty three was. Or this.
And it just. And I think that's short. They, I think just not that anyone coming in, you know, they would have to research. Breathe, I guess that person does not have a short term rental, so you don't have to have. So you have to be 103 way. What's 103 ways of a property is that the building, there would be a lot to go into that. To like.
Well. Reading a comment that's in addition, I hope that it will take into account the fact that the potentialized VR on its neighbors. For example, the area to be rented out and used by the transit needs to. Minimal distance from any neighbor. I've heard 100 feet given as a reason. That's. Right. It's a. Press it. Well, no, I. Just saying we want to take. On every. Okay. That's. It's. No. This is. I don't worry.
But like. Personal area.
Yeah.
With different.
Yeah.
May even be beneficial to have.
Both. No, but I mean, you could. I think. Okay. But that. Don't have. We're.
I would go definitely not.
Dress. Well, the next one is eliminate noise. Or term rentals.
We, the comment was from a. Felt that. Someone who's not running a short term rental could have noise issues and it's not an issue that is solely something under, something that belongs to.
Which. Being. And now it's concerned with. Because. Oh, it is. It says, earlier, the application demonstrate. Setbacks. You know. Short term. This is probably. Residential. That's.
Right, that's, that's what the. Exclusive.
Well, or I think I thought it was concerning how do you demonstrate? Demonstrated. I don't. Anybody else could. Taking any action.
I don't think we should take action.
There's good reason. We had a residential area. To say no. And it has, it's a hotel. They're saying it is, oh, you took. It can get some extra. Nutrition. But to your point. I did. The fact. I'm not sure. Hmm. Without defining. Things. We don't have. It's fine, maybe, maybe it's fine for now, demonstrated, maybe. Hope this hears. Based on. Now. So. This is. Parents. Let's. I think it's. Way, here's the. The. Finish. Visual that you got. Why is? Well. Oh, there, there are lots of. Specific standards. Yeah. But there was a demonstration.
Yeah.
No, I wish I weren't. But, but to me, it was, it was a problem. It was mean that you have to go up to the, get permission.
Demonstrate.
The words. Oh, I don't. It was. Yeah.
What is?
Yeah.
But that's always good. Because the town, yeah. That was just pretty comprehensive.
It's incredibly. I believe that.
So. Oh, that's where it was. It says the environmental performance standard. Seven point four shall apply any short term rentals. The application that. Setbacks, properly, privately or other means, short term rentals should be removed. Sure. On that, we think that's just.
Answer Kevin's question. That would next. Mission.
Right.
So if I can just go through that, so if we are. Taken as a unwise. That kind of would also buy.
Right to everything.
Well, that's. It has. Yeah.
But there are other uses who also have that same line.
But the intent. Would be. I think it's for now.
Yeah. Obviously.
More for now.
At this.
It.
It would be, although, you know, if he wanted to claim that he would. Provide some evidence to that.
Making that much.
Exactly, consistently.
Well, I'm just wondering because, you know, maybe we wanted, you know, maybe that. But it.
That's a space. Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Right. That's not long. We might.
I think.
It would have to be in the state.
And as a state would.
It's that. My. If the next. One is add examples, because consider an exterior evidence. Undeficient. You.
Sure. But it's. From rentals.
Well, I thought it would be on. Oh, thank you. Inside.
Right, exterior evidence.
Yeah, exterior.
Yes, quite.
That's right.
My use as.
Is.
Fifty basketballs or, I don't know what, I mean, just saying, yeah. I mean, we're always having cars parking. It's just. Things.
Well, attempt. You know, then for a party, temporary or exterior. Exterior. Ways. If. Say that. Well, if it doesn't stand out. If it doesn't stand out in.
Does mean it's not a sure.
No, but that's what I meant. It would be something you're. In a neighborhood. Is that something?
I don't know what. I saw that.
And I think that's, that's.
That was.
Then you will be expected to interpret that. With, without a hard and fast regulation. You know, we might have to issue some sort of correction order with someone because he's decided that what all they're doing is exterior. That, that's his. Doesn't give him a lot of. Words to fall back on.
Well, I, I would have. At least, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, what comes to mind is. That's. You know. How would you? I don't. So. I don't want to see. Maybe to his point, if I could think that or other things, other documents. Here. Would be wondering that out. This. For some people, there's some bad neighbors out. That's. What? Almost. That commercial style. That's a light, but hold back. Don't people do that? On left. Or a dumpster. Yeah. Different people. It's all about it now that.
The.
Destruction. Yeah, yeah. Or. I don't know, whether the storage. Was. Oh, I could see every. We have some very, very large ones that we give out.
They'll be made into an access.
I think that, does he expect us?
Well, then he should come to us.
I, I didn't, I just. You know, we asked him to review, you know. You know, are you going to be able to enforce these regulations? That was one issue that, that he was, felt he was on shape.
Would you all take very well. Very definitely, you know, he is concerned that the only thing that he have to make. My understanding of short term rental is typically a neighbor. Force the short term. It's the only concern about the exterior evidence, so.
Well, he came out with.
No, he, no, he, that wasn't the soul.
Oh, gosh.
He came up with five. When it was thirty days or less. February is a month, then he did the first thirty months. And then he identified the problem, you have. Text. Want to unit the help. Part. Incisive. Words. This code compliance with pre-existing conditions.
No one understands.
I don't think that. As any, you know. I, I wasn't trying to make. Things that I. Make sure were covered. Activity was one, and he couldn't figure out. The type of.
I think so too.
That he really had concerns of. Oh, I'm trying to think of like he was thinking. Bring it on to current.
That's a question, my question, but I don't think. I would think that would accomplish. What part of this? Reaching the stairway, you have to read your plan, because they were safe. Quite a bit, feeling that way.
Some of those. Better say.
Secrets. Process behind five people. Well, I said. Change of use. That's on the. That is pretty valid. For saying. Not, not as soon. To building photo shows are valid. I would love it, case. That's not ours, but not to test us, that's.
Except that it is in the, the language is in this. And so he would have to find that. That it is up to code for building fire and the others.
Well, I thought that was part of the intent. That they were up.
Building, building fire.
That's what we have. Something.
Well, it can be said really. That does.
I don't know.
How I would imagine work is someone. Right, right, and have to demonstrate somehow that they are up to. Codes, either from letters on the fire marshal.
Compared to. Something. Perfect. Perfectly golden. Listen. To put on my solar panels, I needed to bring up my panel. Say. Last one, I've got to say is that I'm not sure what's applicable. Wait, he was on the next.
Not in arguments.
Not. You want to say. Should we look into, or maybe, or. I think it was a less than knowledge.
Another issue. Is here. Building has to be. By at all applicable zoning. He's saying, well, what about? Structures that are, since the grandfather, pre-existing non-performing, they don't, they don't.
Are you using that term?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It has to be in compliance with all applicable zoning codes, getting rid of all building stuff. So this compliance includes legal monitoring construction, they're not, right, they're not compliant with zoning.
Zoning. Things in that. Something that was built before the.
Right, so that's, that's true, that's true.
I didn't ask, well, yeah, no, Sam gets into a, we went out to Block Island. Really now. One door and windows. Not spending, we don't pay money to that. Oh, no, we left, I was like.
You're staying here.
And so that, that's the kind of thing that you really can't. You know, I don't know, you can't allow that.
But you've got a red closet.
Oh, it was.
At the door.
Wasn't a national. So what, what do we, what do we think? What do we think?
Do you want to address this?
Well, it's. Address which one, I don't think these.
Oh, certainly, one, one question is the after. Take it apart. This will be, you okay with? We have got the deal. Does the grandfather do? That's why, yeah, that's why. I think that's. Got a picture that I would. You have anything else in our zoning that talks about codes?
There may be some, there may be some. Fire, yeah, exactly, don't be working in fire codes. There may be.
Well, we refer to the codes, though, it's really, but what we'll say. Just refer to. Yeah, it's what's happening. We don't have any. Talk to someone else what's happening.
They keep changing.
Well, that's the reason for, for saying that. Don't say we. Do need to. If somebody do something, I shouldn't want that, but it's not a good spot. There's an action. Or just, how we use. Or we saying that we're not going to address it, but may pass that over to the ordinance. They, they should. Should consider.
That is. Yeah. Thank you. I don't know. Always.
Everybody. I mean, and every time.
Right, the next item is a property manager. On site.
Um, that was from the woman who said she managed three or four short. Yeah, I agree.
She lives somewhere else.
She does, that's.
Oh, yeah, oh, heaven.
Right.
Yeah, that's, we're not controlling things, right? The owner being the site. Has.
Interesting. No. No. I, I'm just going to address this. I think that. Property management, living on site.
We have to be there.
For what?
Well, if he, if he's a PC.
So that, this would be allowed. One.
Provided.
He's.
It's not a chance.
Not just a man. They would have to, that's. The primary resident.
He's primary resident.
Personally.
That's it, right.
Well, but that's what they would have to be, I think the answer to this.
Yeah.
Property name, also. Is somebody, that's their, that's their primary resident?
This one is modified the definition of short term rental. Definition of primary.
That's right, yes.
It's because we don't have. What they do in Denver.
It's a suggestion.
But the question of primary residence.
We don't, and I think that was suggested. No, I think, I think that was suggested because Colorado, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Primary residence, so they had that.
But we have, we have primary, right? Loose. Primary. But I don't think.
Primary residence, yeah.
But we don't define it. Where's that?
I think. It'd be an obvious definition, well, I'm truly reading that legal. However, it was, that, that word resonates, it is defined many different ways. Leave it to me, I've read that, just what it was. Oh, they were calling them homicide.
No, that's where I think, I think we need.
In fact.
All's is. What's difference in short term? We had to, we had to define better.
Or even one residential, we don't have the definition.
Why, why is. Not, it's residence. Or maybe I shouldn't say residence, resident.
Yeah.
A red, a residence. It's a place that has certain physical requirements, but it's also its use.
Well, we, we should define what we need, that's, say that.
From primary residence, I think primary residence should be.
It's pretty obvious to us what we think.
Well, because it isn't, it may not be for.
Well, and then it's not. By, by lax law or anyone else's. Who? I think it has a legal. What's just the plan?
Well, I don't think it does have.
So it does.
Where, where's the term?
Primary residence. Is legally considered to be the principal or main home you live in.
I'm very. What's the residence?
Oh.
Oh, I guess my question will be favor you, yeah, we just, honestly, when, if we put a definition, I don't know. Is that a, I don't know, I don't know, and that's, and that's why. Exactly, I don't know, so once you're through with your discussions, if there are those types of questions. Um, I'll address it pretty before, before you guys take it.
Unless we want to.
Well.
Except for, right, but maybe not as part of it.
Yeah, maybe not as part of this package, but it did say. Noise ordinance.
Yeah, take care.
We want to move on to the next.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it just might be. Whatever, on that, on another front.
But we do, we do want to, yeah. I'm worried. There you go. Well, we have the next item. That's just was one we've already. Verified. In the faulty. Unit loans.
Didn't we have the definition first?
Oh, it, it was cut in there where it's. It's so hard.
Right, I mean, I, I think.
Don't know that would require.
Yeah, I mean, the section we're talking about, what a short term rental. R, R, U, R M district. The owner or let's say if the lot. The owner or let's see if the lot, you have your primary residence in one unit or two unit dwelling? Or in the principal dwelling unit or in a legally permitted accessory dwelling unit? I believe this language was crafted to address those single unit or two unit dwellings that happen to be in. So. As opposed to addressing an apartment building that is in the RN zone.
But that's where it's.
Right.
I thought we wanted. We would allow that based on.
Right, it's, it's, it's just it doesn't expressly say that you are a multi-unit dwelling or in an RM zone. Because I think the feeling was that, you know, the, the regulations for the apartment or condo got. Deal with all of that.
Right, well, we would, we would not.
Right, right.
They want to turn the entire thing into.
But it's just coming up with. I don't think changing any.
No, no.
Or attempt.
But I don't think the language. It's. Right, it makes it very clear that. The development in an RM zone. And I don't think.
It's hard to.
Yeah.
Might have to start throwing out. Start also.
Uh, or even just another sentence.
No, but that's what I meant by.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I think it's.
How about it?
It was trying to, trying to put everything in what's said.
Right, right.
I think it, they, they wrote one.
Yeah, and I, and I think your sentence didn't craft it. Or in multiple, yeah, exactly. All like that.
And then we have. Or.
Is there any estimate or when we? Results? So I think attorney counsel's letter, he said that the arguments were right this month, but it. Oh, it depends. It, yeah, this year, sure, next month? No, I appreciate that. That's a good. The biggest help is actually getting it all.
Oh.
Oh.
Unless we want to. Yeah, well, we have to add.
Yeah, it's all right.
So.
Yeah.
No, no, you don't, I mean, you know, you want to draw it, some of these items, absolutely want to put into. Want to do that. All right, you know, if it's something that clearly not advertised, I mean, I would want to draw it and. Because this is a commission generated text amendment, there are no deadlines. You could wait 10 years before. You don't, but, but there's no, there's no deadline. So if you are comfortable, if you want to wait for the decision, who can do that? You get impatient because it hasn't come up, can make the decision.
Moment. Oh, we've asked.
He, he recommends waiting. Yeah.
But what's the risk if you go in? Same way, we, we said you can always, if there's something you have to change, you will have to.
Absolutely, that's, that's right, that's right, the risk is that you might have a regulation that. That contradicts some kind of case law. Um, that you need to go to work on and you make another text of it and open it all back up again.
That could happen. But time for any single thing that you do.
That's right, absolutely, and at least you're, at least you're controlling the short term.
That, because that'd be possible. Until such a time. She's made. And this.
That's right, that's true.
So have something in the box.
Yeah, but.
It's the first.
It's not. Yeah. Or if they are not minor, then. Decision of whether you want to. Make a decision or if this.
It's. Aren't these? That's it. I didn't have any. Right. And.
I don't know, yeah, I just don't know.
But I like having definitions. Universal. Some of these. I was surprised. It's like, read out a petition.
I know. I, I mean, actually, since you're talking definitions, the other definition that was just in was modifying the definition. The grounds. This definition came from Colorado, but it tries to make it clear that, that it cannot be, it can be operated by persons, but persons do not include corporations. Or.
Well, we've done that last thing.
Field graph.
All of our.
Okay. Okay, okay, very good.
And the other definition. I'm on site. Twenty nine here. But he didn't. Oh, but I mean, that's. But I think it's good. He saw this. Well, it looks like.
Okay.
They made a lot of.
Yes, thank you for the discussion.
We have three. Well, I don't know how long.
Right, exactly.
Well. Take this.
We revisit this. Okay, well.
Well, so.
But we also revisit it, ask the question. Oh, business.
No, no, no.
That's.
Yeah, if you have not made a decision on this application, you should not have.
On. So if we get, work back from the attorney.
Right.
We just. I'm just.
Discussing.
Yeah, no, 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 I don't.
Yeah.
Only.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Well, I should respond. We went over. It's a relative issue. Now we get on time, business cycle. Approval of minutes. Meetings. Very, Jim, very nice. For. Or entertain emotion for. Well. Who is it? Now, well called area usually put down. Or to ask. Look at some.
Okay.
Things. And one more page. Or. Looking for subdivision. Question. SIT twenty three oh two, very hand. No confusion over what happens. After, it just says the applicant body of sixty day, fifty five day extension to allow. Then to discuss the revised entrance. And for redesign the site. But we have to indicate this. And folks.
Oh, 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 I was just saying, yeah.
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
And it's. Okay. Good, has something. That says what I would. We're going on. Proportional, says Amanda, also, let me say. I really. Those. Motion is. Next meeting is, uh, January ninth. In push. Wait. I can. The name on that. The place. From well called, we have the same issues. If all is not a lot. Question. We moved down to there. And absentee's. Always be listed. And then public carers. Where should be a statement? The. Secretary. Page. All. And the reporting staff. In the first paragraph. As the cycle and those conditions. It's not. Make sure. They don't have. Actually, we should just. Oh. It's not important. What is. She's. Awesome. We are. About on the approval of the minutes of January ninth. Did all those. I agree. The opposed instance. Motion is carried. And state. My last. Even. January twenty third, I'll. Provo of those minutes. Anyone have any connection? That's. Back to all calm. I'm issue. With the off minutes. Page one. And we're on page two of these boxes. Through the votes. Yes. Two subtle ones on two lines. That are one, which best and so the best.
Oh, yeah, it does, okay, good point.
You can't figure the boxes. Use the, use the right one.
Yeah. Probably subtle.
I don't know, oh, because.
I don't think it'll. Let us.
Oh, you gotta expand. Like you do. Cause the X's won't line up.
Right.
You don't want to.
You don't want to.
Well, maybe that's. It looks like, uh, like a box. Over the box. Page three. Not box.
Oh, yeah.
And. Well, it.
And they don't look.
Yeah.
I get concerned if they don't look professional people. All three of them. I agree. And we have the same on page four. This one. This copy, right?
It's weird, yeah.
And you have that issue. And.
You know, page five and one box. Right.
At all. You didn't copy. Now, but it's hard, they, you can't really brush off the lines. Look at. About on approval on. Minutes of January twenty third, as amended. All those in favor. I, you opposed the extensions, motion is carried. Motion. That. Other wish to address those. Fans. That are. Correspondence from.
Yes, well. So this is the annual dinner. Conversation holds, I just wanted to know, it's on March twenty eighth, but that's also the next community conversation thing, and, and that topic is shaving.
That's. That was sent in this one.
And, and if that's what you want to do, that's fine, I mean, these, these things are recorded.
Right.
Yeah, there's a conversation.
Because of the subjects of this.
Right.
Yeah. That's hard.
Yep. Although, just keep in mind, you know, you can't take, if we haven't made a decision, can't take any of that information.
It's like a retention.
That's right.
Well, it's not a discussion.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if you find like, that's a great idea, and that's what we should have done. Like. Yeah. Yeah, we can't bring it into the discussion.
Decision.
But yeah, I mean, if you, if anybody wants to go, let us know, we will sign you up.
I mean, I guess that's the risk we've had. Yeah.
Well, it's also, it's an understanding of it. Okay. There's a lot of other. Other.
It's more extreme, if we, if, if information. But if. Information. Yeah, well, that's what. On it.
And you may have been.
I don't know. They are. Yeah. There are a lot of the, these problems have come by. A lot of the, these problems have come by. Don't believe. I think that. I speak. Or intentionally. In. Just the. Also. We have no other. Comments and. Okay. Problems, other visions. We have midway comments.
This is, excuse me. Bond was reduced to $80,000. Last year. Some division regulations rate that we get 1%, 10% of the bond amount for one year as maintenance. Part of the. All process. And public. No, this was the road acceptance. And then it had to go to the council.
This football.
It does.
We have. Just.
I know, I know.
You can get into trouble.
You can.
Does anyone have any concerns? On race, okay. I'm going to make a motion to release the $80,000 midway common subdivision. Any. Who?
To save us.
Is there a second? Oh, second, in this question. Vote on the motion to release $80,000. All those in favor say hi. Hi. Any opposed? The extensions, questions carried. Next we have is Colonel Ledger to space update.
So I. I, I. This is a summary of a number of emails. That had the realtor who was here and the contractor. You know, things, things belong. They have contracts. Work is ongoing on the play area. But again, they can be depressing, so I.
All dates?
They don't have dates yet. Mostly because they're waiting on weather for. The sidewalk.
Are you, are you just, oh.
That is, that's underway. That's underway, but that's, there are surveyors out there. That's.
Oh, it's a prince.
Oh, it's, it's literally, yeah, market, like where the sidewalks are and the lights and the sewer lines and all of that.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't have a date.
No.
But it is work.
It is moving forward and they, every time I talk to them, I.
And we start this, whether it's spring already, rather than in the yard.
Oh, yeah, I'll ask for dates, I'll ask for dates.
So it seems that that's a completion. They're getting some.
Yeah. Yep.
Or. Specific dates are rough. That's what. This is what we know. And on the sidewalk. Before meeting.
Right now, it insists that four feet.
Yeah. I don't have that.
I know.
Oh, man.
Right, I don't have a reputation. There's only one of those two engineers. They're down a lot of stuff.
So. Now, future. And we keep the. Team number.
Oh, sure. Okay. I mean, that's what we had been doing when it was just poll tips, they were listed. Yeah, it was, although they, it wasn't.
They was.
Space.
Or just leave a space.
That's what.
Live or leave a space.
And although we also did get another application yesterday. Remember residential. New owner.
Okay.
Oh, it's the same, same use.
Oh, it is.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I thought that would change.
Right, this is a new owner who runs other life facilities. So the application is parking lot, everything.
Does it sound?
The site plan expired. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There we are.
Okay, we have referrals. Here's the same thing. Well, they have IDs. Or you can put paragraph.
Okay.
It just looks like. Paragraph numbers. It could be one. Nation. Oh, no.
We'll get it figured out.
So, yeah, first, first referral is on Water Street. These could be other tree trails. Oh. So that, I'm sorry, we're not at.
Yeah.
That's why I got that. That's why. It's certainly a heart. What is going on, and why we didn't have. So they. Yeah, these are just. Referrals, we have. EBA referral. We heard sort of those are on Water Street.
So as you'll recall, the commission approved a site land in a camp for, on January 23 of this year for structural renovations. The applicant is now seeking a variance to waive the flood zone requirements versus substantial improvements. An existing historic building for both elevating utilities as well as.
This all into. All it has to do with.
Yes, correct.
That's right.
It's. But we know of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have. Next variance is.
Did you know that? Yeah.
Yes.
But they were going to. And if they do, they don't get it.
And they have.
They will. They will.
They'll do it in, yeah, they'll do a piece now. So they, if you remember, there is going to be a new restaurant on the bottom floor and then residence on the second. So if they don't get this variance, they'll just space it out over the year, year or two years to keep under that.
Yeah, the next one is. Variance for. 135.
Which is fair.
Which is fair agree. But no building in.
Questions.
But if you. Set that.
Not.
Not in this district. Does anyone have anything?
I didn't, I didn't know exactly where it was. Nickel was the way to block.
Well, it's absolutely.
Yeah, I couldn't like tell. Yeah, it'll be, but it's Navy House, right?
Except, except the senior officers.
Okay.
But, but, and honestly, we keep going back and forth on these houses. But you can look back. Quite a bit. Several. They have your. A tall one because it's going to be 20 feet up above their house. Because it would be almost level. Almost down the hill. Yes. But, but now they have a picture on there. Way up.
It's up or not down.
Oh, here's a question. Well, there's.
Well, for, you know, going up high.
Honestly, you still kind of. Which is. This. Probably posing to.
Yes.
If we have anything additional to say. At some point. Or. So I'd be so hopeful to see. Of course. Especially with the sunset. That's.
But it's just there and.
Oh, for the reason. You add. The mission. What's everybody knows. Well, I'm hoping this is a powerful mission. Several. In that.
Well, it's open. So, yes, I'm, I'm just gonna say that they can't move down the hill too far because there's a.
It has to do with the maximums. Insurance. It's not insignificant. Use. And. But it's a. You have you. When it's 31. I think it falls in the mission. They said, where's hardship? It's them. That's what we need to ask that question.
It's usually.
No.
Second.
All the.
Yeah.
Right, mission reports. There. It's a lot. Rides for the. Budget of One Water Street. On our end, I notice. We don't have our ASB.
We're working on that, we actually thought we had.
Another schedule.
You'll have it in the next.
Well, it's good to keep them.
Oh, no, absolutely.
I would think. It need to. You'll see. I don't know if anyone's interested.
Oh, yes.
Serving on the group.
Oh, yeah.
I think you might saw one.
It's gonna be, when, when they're gonna be.
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, the RFP closeness. So we're looking for one member from, I mean, zoning will. See, sit on the. That, that's right, that's right, it will probably be, you know, two to four meetings. You know, just. Take maybe two days worth of interviews. One day before that to kind of over who we're going to interview and then.
I, I would, if it's during the day.
Well, I just know what's likely to start. You know. You know more. If you know more, let me know. We will, and we'll, we'll call you guys, I mean, we're not just gonna schedule. No, no. Yeah.
Or if it is.
Yeah.
Back up QB.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, it's always good. Never knows. Reported commission, does anyone?
Well, my favorite concern is lighting. Two things on the ones. Notice on 150, I think it's 150. Parks. Exact counted lights on the side of it. Eliminate is exactly what they've got. By the way, it's fiery. Rightly bright, distracting from just.
It's in the town. I don't know, I don't, I'm just not familiar with it. I don't know.
It's in the city?
I don't know.
I don't, yeah. I don't know where the light is there.
It's.
Yeah, it's something like that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
What's a 150 bridge street pound? Are we? 150 break 3, 150. I'll stick a look.
Eight miles away. What?
Yeah.
It crosses, it's over.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not our problem.
But it's a good one. Going there one.
I took that for 42. Pictures.
No. You have one of these things where I'm not quite sure it's. This is. The store.
Palace.
I know.
So we need to do, have something a little more stringent on.
No, it's by the bridge mark.
Oh. So all those businesses did perimeter lighting around. Watch this enough, there is a crisp lighting, incredibly bright lights. That are, that if you add them up, I'm sure now we're. Quite measurable. Probably inside of their windows or. Maybe that somehow, in which case we need some way to. It's crazy. Just at night, it's. Not great during the day, but at night, obviously.
I was giving much goes out. Yeah, man.
Yeah. It's like you're on late.
I think.
Yeah. Flaring into a residential.
Yeah, it's on the, on the, on the, uh.
Yeah, I just saw this.
Yeah, I actually saw that today. So on the.
It was a town car areas.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, he wouldn't be. But, yeah, that whole stretch of road. And same.
So you're talking security, not cement.
I didn't, I was just.
Driving. Yeah, security, so it's on, what I, it's on the, that side road. Right before. Yeah, exactly, so in, in, just the water, like, I don't know, three or four sections that all go over.
Yeah.
The bottom of the.
And there's no one worried.
Didn't look. Um, there was today, there was a couple trucks out today, they are there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Both for exist.
Yep.
Have anything else? The report is there.
Just have one thing. Um. The IP review. We're gonna send out a call for you guys. Meeting five o'clock. Okay.
Hold this one, yeah.
Little.
Those will determine what we're in the. Yeah. That mites.
They got them down.
A next.
Oh, Jersey Mike's.
Jersey Mike's.
Take them under advisement along with. Your products. So. They do a really nice sound.
Would this be sound? Anything else?
Oh, yeah.
No, that's all.
Motion.